I'd like to call the regular meeting of the Milton City Council for Monday, July 6, 2020 to order. The city strongly recommends that you review tonight's agenda carefully, and if you wish to speak on any item on the agenda, please bring your comment cards to the city clerk as soon as possible. While Milton rules allow for us, a speaker to turn in their comment cards up until the clerk calls the agenda item, once the agenda item is called, no more comment cards will be accepted. So will the city clerk please call the roll and make general announcements?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I'll be happy to call roll for the July 6, 2020 regular meeting, and would like to remind those in attendance to please silence all cell phones at this time. Those attending the meeting who would like to make a public comment, you are required to fill out a comment card prior to speaking on the item. Your comment card must be presented to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. All speakers, please identify yourself by name, address, and organization before beginning your comment. If you are representing an organization, an affidavit is required stating you have the authority to speak on behalf of that organization. Please review tonight's agenda, and if you would like to make a comment, please bring your comment card to me now. Demonstration of any sort within the chamber is prohibited. Please refrain from any applause, cheering, booing, outbursts, or dialogue with any person speaking. Anyone in violation will be asked to leave. As I call roll this evening, please confirm your attendance. Mayor Joe Lockwood.
Here.
Councilmember Peyton Jameson.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Moore.
Here.
Councilmember Laura Bentley.
Here.
Councilmember Carol Cookerly.
Here.
Councilmember Joe Longoria.
Here.
And for the record, Councilmember Rick Morick is absent. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, good evening, everybody, and welcome to our city council meeting here in the city of Milton. Sudhi, if you would please sound the first item, the next item.
Our next item this evening is approval of the meeting agenda, Agenda Item Number 2175.
I do want to add an executive session that, to discuss personnel. Is there anything else that anybody wanted to add to the agenda? If not, I'll open for a motion on the agenda approval.
Mayor, I move that we approve the meeting agenda as prepared with the addition of an executive session to discuss personnel.
Second.
Chair, I have a motion for approval, as amended, from Councilmember Longoria, with a second from Councilmember Cookerly. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? That's unanimous. Sudhi, do we have any general public comment?
I do have two, one to be read into the record, and another one.
Let me just read the rules, and the next item is general public comment. Public comment is a time for citizens to share information with the mayor and city council, and to provide input and opinions on any matter that is not scheduled for its own public hearing during today's meeting. Each citizen who chooses to participate in public comment must complete a comment card and submit it to the city clerk prior to the agenda item being called. Please remember, this is not a time to engage the mayor or members of city council in conversation. When your name is called, please come forward and speak into the microphone stating your name and address. For the record, you'll have five minutes for remarks. The city encourages you right now to review the agenda, and if you wish to speak, to bring your comment cards to the clerk. So we'll move on, or Sudhi, you say you've got two comments?
Yes, sir. Ms. Pamela Jackson.
Pamela Jackson, 2105 Bethany Way, Milton. Painted Horse Winery, Pamalot. You know, I don't even really know if I need to say anything right now. I'm more just here because of my presence, because I know that all of you are very aware, and you've been, I think, supportive of me. I did send an email out to y'all the day before yesterday, I guess, I think it was, and I hope you got that. And I don't, I think I'm, I'm, I'm not contesting or approving, I'm not sure what I'm doing, because I'm so confused on what is being presented as far as the farm wineries go. I did see the foreign wine in there, but I thought they were going to present, at least the beer, and that is one of the big issues that I've got, but the, the whole kind of package in there. So all I wanted to do is say, I'm here, this is hugely important to me. I do appreciate all the effort and time that you all have put into it, and it's important. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Sudhi, you have another comment?
Yes, I have one to read into the record. It does not have, um, the words for example.
It was an email sent to me by Arthur Pasha Yan at 13895 Bethany X Point, Milton, Georgia. My comment relates to the following item from page 24 of the plan, Tier 3, 5 to 10 years, sidewalk on north side of Bethany, west of Highway 9, 2.6 million. By the drawing, I see this continues a sidewalk on Bethany Bend all the way to Hopewell Road. This section of Bethany Bend is incredibly dangerous for bicycling, being narrow with no safe shoulders. Therefore, I strongly recommend that this be specifically marked as multi-use trail in the plan versus sidewalk, given North Park and the number of schools on Bethany Bend, and the dangerous road conditions for walking or bicycling. Please see if you can move the priority to Tier 1 or 2 to hopefully reduce the chance of someone getting hurt. And that's all, sir.
Okay. So do we have no more public comment then?
No, sir.
All right. So if we can move on to the consent agenda, Sudhi, if you'll please read the items.
First item is approval of the May 18, 2020 regular city council meeting minutes. Agenda item number 2176. Next is approval of the financial statements and investment report for the period ending May 2020. Agenda item number 2177. Approval of a change order between the city of Milton and Purvis Systems, Inc., for the fire station alerting. Agenda item number 2178. Next, approval of a contract between BIS Digital, Inc., and the city of Milton, Georgia, for the installation of an ADA compliant listening assist for the Milton courtroom. Agenda item number 2179. Approval of a professional services agreement between the city of Milton and CHA Consulting, Inc., for Cogburn Road Sidewalk. Agenda item number 2180. Our sixth and final consent agenda item this evening is approval of subdivision plats and revisions. Eric Mondai Land Lots 833, 2770, and 2780, Bethany Bend, minor plat, recombining three lots into two lots, 8.136 total acres, 0.24 lots per acre. Agenda item number 2181.
Okay. Do I have a motion for approval on the consent agenda?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the consent agenda as read.
Second.
Chair, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Okay, Sudhi, if you'd please sound the items under report and presentations.
This item is discussion of the Trail Master Plan. Mr. Parag Agrawal.
Mayor and the city council members, I am Parag Agrawal, City's Community Development Director, and today we are here in front of the city council to present the final draft of the Trail Master Plan, called the Milton Community Trail Prioritization Plan. This has been a 15-months process that included numerous community, community meetings, field visits, city council briefings, data analysis, online surveys, and cost estimating. Today, I have the entire project team here with me to answer any questions from the city council, including Michelle McIntosh Ross, Principal Planner, and she has served as the project manager of this very important project, Shubha Janagam, Senior Planner from our department, Theresa Stickles, Conservation Project Manager, Christina Pestori, the project manager from Kimley Horn, and Cindy from Kimley Horn. Today, we are also joined by the Citizens' Trail Advisory Committee members, including the Chair of the Citizens' Trail Advisory Committee, Dr. Brian Maloney. Thank you, Dr. Maloney, for being here today. I would also like to thank City Councilmember Paul Moore. Before City Councilmember Paul was elected to the city council, he was a very active member of the Trail Advisory Committee, and he helped us immensely in drafting this Trail Master Plan. So thank you, Councilmember Moore, for helping us out. As we all know, the Milton residents love their trail network, and according to the 2019 Comprehensive Parks and Recreational Master Plan, around 85% of the residents used walking, biking, and hiking trails in the past. In 2016 Comprehensive Transportation Plan, around 95% of the residents responded by saying they would like to walk and bike if improvements are made to the city's trail network. The 2020 Trail Master Plan puts the focus on community participation and community involvement into the trail planning activities of Milton. Therefore, the project team is calling this Trail Master Plan as the Milton Community Trail Prioritization Report. The Trail Master Plan was guided by the community, and is not only a visioning exercise. This plan basically divides the visioning exercise into various trail segments. It also prioritizes the various trail segments as per the funding levels, and we also have an implementation schedule of this Trail Master Plan. So again, in transportation planning, this is not only a transportation plan, but what we call it as a transportation programming, that basically looks at the various transportation projects, funding levels, and also prioritizes those transportation projects based on the funding levels.
Excuse me for, I'm sorry to interrupt. If you have to advance the slides, can you?
Yeah, I will update them when I need. So what we heard from the Trail Advisory Committee members, that the city has been planning for the city's Trail Master Plan for the last 10 years, and the focus should now be on the Trail Master Plan implementation, construction, and maintenance of the trail network in the city of Milton. So, David, can you move the slides now? So starting with the summary of the plan recommendations, these are some of the, I cannot see these slides on the screen, right? Okay. Now coming to the summary of these plan recommendations, some of the recommendations are, this master plan recommends around 1.8 miles of off-street rails, a 5.3 miles of new side paths, 6.86 miles of sidewalks, and around 11 new crossing treatments to encourage more pedestrian environment in the city of Milton. If you look specifically in the Birmingham Park and the green space properties, this master plan recommends around 4.2 miles of decomposed granite trails, around 9.5 miles of native salt trails, and 97 parking spaces. David, can you move the slide? Again, these are some of the priorities of the master plan. I will say, I was very proud when I saw that the Trail Advisory Committee was able to come up with their priorities in the very first advisory committee meeting. And these are the, and these are the top four priorities of this master plan. The first priority area is within and connecting to Crab Apple area. As we know, Crab Apple is the city's new downtown, and there's so much of construction happening, and very soon by next year, the city will be having a very vibrant downtown. So the Trail Advisory Committee members thought the, our downtown Crab Apple should be the first priority area for having new trail network in the city of Milton. Second is the Deerfield area. As we know, Deerfield is also one of the very important commercial corridors of the city. So again, walking and biking trails within the Deerfield area. Number third was the area of safety concerns for walking, biking, and for horse riding. Number fourth was the trails in Birmingham Park, and the trails in the newly, newly acquired green space bond fund properties, again, hiking, walking, biking, and horse riding. Can you move the slide? So this is the summary of the community engagement. As we mentioned, this Trail Master Plan had, was very heavy on the process, and there were a number of community meetings. We have been in front of the city council for three times in the past. There were four Milton Trail Advisory Committee meetings. The Milton Trail Advisory Committee members was a large group, it included around 25 members. There were three open house meetings and four target group meetings. One target group meeting was on Deerfield, Crab Apple, Citywide, and Interior Trails. We also had an online survey in the month of September of 2019, and there were more than 1,000 people who responded to that survey. Again, this is some more details of the community engagement. As I mentioned, there was a community input survey from September 11th to September 25th. More than 1,000 people responded. Again, they were, these four target group meetings, August 7th, August 14, 22nd, and 18th, again, Crab Apple area, Deerfield, Interior Trails, and Citywide. There were four public open houses, so that the Milton residents can get, can give us the feedback on the trail master planning in the city of Milton. So this is the group of our, these are the names from our Milton Trail Advisory Committee. Again, this was a very balanced group, residents, business owners, people from all the city council districts, very balanced group, very large group. I will not advise to form such a large group in the next projects. But again, before we move forward, I will invite Dr. Brian Maloney to come here and speak for the Milton Trail Advisory Committee.
See, I bet Robert didn't know this was part of his job description when he came here a few months ago.
As I say, man, I'd love to get him to come to our office. Mayor, Council, I think it's really important to reflect back on what brought us to this moment. You know, it seems like it wasn't too long ago where we had a total disconnect between some of the plans of the city and what the citizens really wanted. What Parag has laid out for you is really an amazing effort on behalf of the city, and I praise both Steve Parag and your staff, on assembling the whole team, and the level of community involvement is really unbelievable. So I think before you, you have a good idea of the priorities of the community. But there's so much growth and development going on in Milton, to accept one document is just going to be something on a shelf. And I think going forward, the way you really make that a living document, and continue to keep that connected to the community, is really reestablishing that Milton Trail Committee. Years ago, it was rolled into the Parks and Rec Committee under a different advisor than Jim, and at that point, very little money, very low priority. This is a high priority now, and so I would encourage you to think about reestablishing a committee where everyone appoints one person, and I would also encourage you to put that under Parag, because community development, that was part of the reason why we chose some of those areas, because with the rapid development and everything, those are key. But thank you so much for allowing me the opportunity to serve, and thank you.
Thank you, Mayor.
So again, just want to give you a brief overview of the various meetings of the Milton Trail Advisory Committee. The first meeting was held in June of 2019, that basically established the goals and priorities, as I mentioned. In the very first committee meeting, the committee members were able to establish the top four priorities of the Trail Master Plan. In the second meeting, we reviewed and discussed the draft concept plans. We also discussed the facility types and the park users. The, we also had a field tours. Again, many of the committee members wanted to meet in the field rather than sitting in this conference room, so Michelle was able to schedule a very important tour in September of 2019. The third Trail Advisory Committee meeting was in November of last year, and we basically reviewed the community input, discussed the draft costing and phasing, and we also reviewed the amount of funding that's available for the trail network in the city. The fourth meeting was early this year, and in the final meeting, we were able to come up with a consensus on the various trail planning projects in the city of Milton. So after this, I will, so let me start with this. So as I mentioned, there was a lot of community input, but we also went in front of many existing city committees and city boards, which had a very, what I will say, very important aspect of trail planning in the city of Milton. So we went in front of the Milton Green Space Advisory Committee, just to make sure what are their priorities for the Milton green space properties. We also went in front of the Milton Equestrian Committee to identify their priorities for horse riding and for other users. We also went in front of the Milton Public Arts Commission, because as we know, public art is one of the key focus areas of the various trail networks. If you look in Atlanta, Atlanta Beltline, and if you look at the various public art projects which are coming around this Beltline project, we thought that this could also be one of the focus areas in Milton, the art which is basically compatible and will enhance the Milton's character. So we also went in front of the Milton Public Arts Commission. So with this, I will ask Christina, who was a very important member of our team, to talk about the scope and process, and take it from there. about the scope and process, and take it from there.
Thank you for the opportunity to be here. This is the second time I have left my house for a meeting, so very, very excited to be here, very, very unique time we are in. So what I want to do, Prag gave you an overview of all of the things that we have been doing from an outreach perspective, so I want to give you a little bit more detail on some of the technical components, because as you know, with any planning process, it's important to have both of those. So what you see on the screen is a little bit of an overview of the overarching process. We had three major tasks. The first task really was understanding where we are today, so really doing that inventory, a lot of the mapping, and then being able to go out to actually visit a lot of the sites. We also spent a lot of time developing the goals and priorities, as Prag mentioned, with the advisory committee. Moving on to task two, we really dove in to work on developing the trail concepts. And along with that, we had a number of associated committee meetings that went with that and target group meetings. And then finally, really understanding, we had to cost what those projects look like, and then understand the feasibility, constructability of those elements, and then prioritize them based on the funding availability that we saw. I will wave bigger. So some of the technical elements of the work that we did, as I mentioned, we conducted site visits, went out to each of the different, to Crab Apple and to Deerfield and to a number of the green spaces in Birmingham Park. And actually, for Cooper Sandy, we went out and took a GPS unit and actually mapped the trails and the logging roads that are out there, because we didn't have any sort of starting place for that. So that was a great way to be able to digitize that information. On the alignment and concept development, we really got to work on developing the concepts for Deerfield and Crab Apple specifically, and then a different, completely different type of process when we went out into the green spaces, to really be able to get out there and work on the concepts. You'll see one of the images in the middle really is of our principal landscape architect working with various contours. So we were working with limited information in the green spaces since they are so very new, and we don't have survey data, but we had a lot of great information to start. And so we were able to work with our landscape architect to develop some of those different concepts for the different trail facilities. And then, as I mentioned, the constructability and feasibility, trying to figure out, you know, how many of these projects, what is the reality of them being able to be done for some sort of reasonable cost? And so the next piece of that then was the costing of those facilities. So let's go to the next slide. So on the costing front, we broke out projects into three different categories. Existing projects that are underway, meaning they're being constructed through another entity, and then ones that are proposed. The proposed projects are the ones that we focused on specifically for the costing effort. So what we did was work on costing for engineering and construction. It does not include utility costs, and it also does not include right-of-way costs, so those are other considerations that will need to be taken into account, mostly in Crab Apple and Deerfield, where you actually have some right-of-way and utility considerations. For projects that we anticipated might compete well for regional funding, we did discount the overall cost of those by 50%, recognizing that there could be some match opportunities. And so we would encourage you to aggressively look for those opportunities, to be able to leverage your local dollars, to be able to get more regional and federal funding. And so when we look at then the budgeting piece of this, so we costed the projects, then we needed to understand how much, how much money, how much funding are we realistically working with? Obviously, this is a planning level study, and so none of this is guaranteed. I clearly couldn't have told you we would be standing here socially distancing in July. So there's a lot of things that can change, but based on the information that we had available to us at the time, we looked at some of the local funding opportunities, as well as some of the non-local funds. So when we look at local transportation dollars, there's obviously a current TESBLOST. We did anticipate that a second round of TESBLOST could be an opportunity for future funding for these trails. And there's also your sidewalk fund. So any of the projects in Crab Apple and Deerfield could be eligible for transportation dollars, so that is how we allocated those funds. Now, there's other local funds that are non-transportation that we looked at, the impact fee program, as well as just the city's general funds. So those were the funding that we looked at for the park and the green spaces. And then, of course, there are other opportunities to be able to gain non-local funds, some of those federal transportation funds that I mentioned, as well as there are other bicycle and pedestrian grant programs and a lot of recreation programs. A lot of the NRPA, the National Recreation and Parks Association, they're doing a lot of those different types of grant programs, especially right now, because there is a lot of enthusiasm around getting outside and being able to take advantage of those outdoor spaces. So these are great opportunities for the city to once again leverage local dollars. So what you see on the screen here is how we broke out the funding. We have a total of four funding tiers per subarea. Once again, this is, this is still planning level, so these are guides. Depending on the funding opportunities, you may move a little bit slower, but you also may move a little bit faster on the implementation. So what you can see are the first four tiers. The first three of them are what we would consider to be financially constrained. So tier one is for up to two years, tier two is from two to five, tier three is five to 10, and then anything in tier four would be anything aspirational, where we don't have a dollar amount associated with those tiers. And you can see they're broken out by subarea, allocated across the three different tier timeframes. The funding amounts were determined with the Trail Advisory Committee, so we had a meeting and really decided how to break out the funding by subarea and by tier. As I mentioned before, Crab Apple and Deerfield were allocated the transportation dollars, and the remaining funds that were non-transportation went to Birmingham Park, Preserve at Lackey Road, and Preserve at Cooper Sandy. The other thing I do want to continue to reiterate, these are high-level cost estimates for the projects themselves, they are high-level estimates of funding. So it's really meant to be a guide as you move forward, but to give some sort of stratification and prioritization to projects within. Okay, so now what we want to do is just give a little bit of a highlight of the specific concept plans, so we can go, we'll start with Crab Apple. As you know, Crab Apple is your downtown, and so there's a lot of conversation around connectivity and being able to fill in some of the different gaps and take advantages from trail opportunities. So what you see here, Crab Apple and Deerfield maps both look like this. Any of the orange lines are existing side paths or sidewalks. Anything that's in blue is underway from an outside entity, so someone else is already funding it and implementing it. Anything in pink is what we focused on as part of the plan itself. And so what you can see is the full build-out of the plan through tier four, through the aspirational trail, through the aspirational phase. So anything that's shown in pink, and then you also can see those proposed crossing treatments are shown in green. In total, for the Crab Apple, four phases. The draft concept will include connectivity and safety in the area with 0.77 miles of off-street trails, 1.3 miles of side paths, 2.7 miles of sidewalks, and three crossing treatments. Okay, so let's move to Deerfield. So as you know, Deerfield is Milton's most populated area, so once again, connectivity, particularly to some of the schools, and some of the safety considerations were very important for this plan. When you look at the full build-out of the, once again, you can see all of the coloring is the same, so we're focusing as the plan on the things that are shown in pink. Included in the entirety of this is 1.0 miles of off-street trails, 1.7 miles of side paths, four miles of sidewalks, and eight crossing treatments. So now we move into the parks and green spaces. So Birmingham Park is our first one. It's a 200-acre park that is very popular, particularly among the equestrian community today. So that plan, now we're showing a little bit of a different symbology here. So what you can see is the lines that are dashed in green are natural surface trails that are decomposed granite or crushed stone. And those tend to be, we really targeted those to be the ones with more moderate terrain, so more people could access those a little bit more easily. Then we also have shown in the orange dashed line are the native surface trails, so they might have a little bit more topography, and they would just be the native soil underneath. And you can also see there are some crossing treatments. Now, underlying those, you can see under the existing facilities, there is that lighter orange color, so some of these trails exist today, are in use. Some of them need some additional attention, they might have erosion control issues, might need to do some clearing and grubbing. But it's a combination in some places of fixing trails that exist, and in some cases, adding new trails. So what we have in Birmingham Park includes 4.7 miles of native soil trails, 2.3 miles of decomposed granite trails, and 52 general and equestrian trailer parking spaces. Next, we have the Preserve at Cooper Sandy. So this is a centrally located green space bond fund property. This is one of the ones where I said we actually went in with a GPS unit and were able to digitize all of these by walking them with Dennis, so that was a really exciting opportunity. The draft concept plan for Cooper Sandy includes 1.1 miles of native soil trails, 1.3 miles of decomposed granite trails, and 25 general parking spaces. And then our last is the Preserve at Lackey Road. So this is another green space bond fund property. It's a little bit more remote, but it's got some really beautiful naturally occurring environmental areas, including the large lake that you can see in the middle. So for this, the draft concept plan includes 3.7 miles of native soil trails, 0.6 miles of decomposed granite trails, 0.1 miles of boardwalk, and roughly 19 to 20 general and equestrian trailer parking spaces. Now, the last area that is kind of more of a citywide is areas of safety concern. That was one of the other priorities. And so we took a little bit of a different approach with the areas of safety. What you can see on the map here is a combination of, in the yellow dots, those are locations where we had bicycle and pedestrian crashes in a six-year timeframe. Beyond that, then, you can see the lines and the circles that were drawn in red are safety concerns that were identified by the community or by the Trails Advisory Committee. So this gave us an idea of where some of, even if we don't have observed crashes, we have concerns over safety. And you can see they're in a number of different places throughout the city. So we took a little bit of a policy framework approach on that. And you can see there we have a number of, oops, my iPad is acting up. So we have three different phases that we're approaching from that. So first is identifying the key corridors where we really need to focus. So that's understanding, you know, are there opportunities for lane reconfiguration? We know a lot of the, a lot of the roads are very narrow, winding, not a lot of shoulders, and this has been a conversation since the first transportation plan back in 2008. And so we know over time, the city has been working to create additional shoulder space when the resurfacing has happened and those shoulders can be built out. So really go in and identify where can we adjust some lane configurations, where can we have some traffic calming implementation? And then also looking back to the 2016 Comprehensive Transportation Plan, considering the bicycle priority network that was recommended as a part of that plan, recognizing that some corridors might be better as bicycle priority facilities, and others might be more, better prioritized for vehicles. So that's kind of the first step. Then going on to the Phase Two, which really focuses on the systemic policy recommendations, looking at places where we can be putting in flashing signals or HAWK signals, any sort of pedestrian crossing, wayfinding and signage-type pieces that can also help to educate on where we should be crossing safely, and then developing policy guidance associated with the bicycle priority network, including an education campaign. And then finally, once those projects are identified, working to advance and implement those individual projects. So that's the framework that we've outlined for the areas of safety concern. So beyond that, then, that's really the conclusion of the overall plan itself, and so next steps would include any sort of document edits coming from the council or from the public, and then looking forward to plan adoption and then further implementation on the part of the city. So that concludes the presentation, and I'm happy to answer along with Prag, if you have any questions.
Before we have a question, Sue, do we have any public comment?
No, sir, we did not.
Okay. Certainly. First off, I want to just thank everybody that's involved, from our staff, Dr. Maloney, citizens, Kimmelyhorn. You know, it's interesting, this is something that, in fact, Brian probably remember, you know, 13 years ago, 14 years ago, us discussing, and it's, you know, when you talk to people and you say, wouldn't it be great to have a trail system that goes north, south, east, west, everybody can connect and walk, ride a bike, horses, whatever, and everybody's all gung-ho for it. It's, you know, overwhelmingly, and long story short, it's, you know, going through different variations and whatnot, but, you know, and then you get digging into it, and then all of a sudden, people's ideas change, and, you know, my favorite is, you know, somebody doesn't want it, and you say, well, I thought you were for it, and they say, well, I thought it, I liked it when it was in somebody else's yard, but, so anyways, my point is, it's a very tough thing to do something that everybody's happy with and all that, but you guys have done a good job looking at the, at the overall goal and, you know, worked hard to achieve, achieve that. So just want to thank everybody that's, that's been involved to this point, so I know, been a lot of hard work. So with that, I'll open up to, if council has any questions.
I have.
Carol, comments?
All right, thank you very much. I don't quite understand the flow of the money, so as we're focused on Milton Country Club, and then we have all these aspirational opportunities, who's the best person to answer that?
Probably me.
Okay.
So they, they did an excellent job of tearing out how they were going, how they wanted to approach the projects, and they, credit to them, they actually created one that it's achievable. With our current TESBLOST funding and some of the other dollars, we believe we could leverage, in addition to our current CIP plan, there's no reason that, that we can't at least stay somewhat in line with that plan, should, so long as there's no shift in priorities or, or significant revenue drops that we're not currently forecasting. This doesn't have to be done in, separate and apart from the Milton Country Club, though the Milton Country Club is not part of this plan. And there may be times that you'll have some competing projects across parks to be able to make them happen, then you as a, as a council will have to determine which your priority is. But they have set a plan here that is doable, which is not the easiest thing to do. And I do believe over, you know, they did obviously identify some aspirational goals, which will, you know, that'll, may or may not happen, but all the ones that they, all the other ones, that, those are very doable objectives under our current financial structure.
Laura?
I just have a few comments. I wanted to respond to Dr. Maloney's suggestion on reconvening the Trail Plan Committee, because, you know, thanks to, you know, the vision of our staff and Mayor and Council, we tapped the brakes when we started to get very serious about implementing these side paths throughout central Milton. And to, to everyone's credit, we came up with this plan, which is, I think is a great plan, which prioritizes connectivity in Crab Apple and Deerfield, and then what was new was the green space. We introduced $25 million worth of green space, and perhaps maybe destination trails are the way to go, and that's what I see that's so great in this plan, is prioritizing where those trails go, along with Birmingham Park. I can't say enough times, you know, to concentrate our equestrian efforts in Birmingham Park. We can't do everything in every park to, for everyone. For example, same holds true with ADA compliance. I think we need to try to concentrate those measures in certain parks, learn from it, and then see if it can be applied in other parks. So I would love to see the, you know, a Trail Plan Committee reconvened for, for staff to have that group to check back with, on the implementation of this plan, so that it's a living document. My other thoughts are, as I mentioned, Birmingham Park, I loved what the detail that I saw in there, the trailer parking, always would be great to have a water source there, I know that I saw that in there. That's what makes it a legitimate equestrian use. And then also some emergency accommodations for loose horses, you know, someone gets in trouble out there. And then also for Birmingham, if we're gonna have equestrian use out there, and it is absolutely the most perfect place, I think we can attract people to larger parcels here by having that draw and, and the cornerstone of our community. draw and, and the cornerstone of our community. We just need to make sure that it's safe for everyone that uses it by keeping dogs on leashes, especially there. The other part of this is the green space, the destination green space parks, and I was very thankful for the hard work that y'all did on the funding. But I really would like to see more emphasis put on public-private partnerships and utilizing land trusts. I, I think that it wouldn't be a surprise that we all, we intend to put easements on this green space forever, so that future councils don't feel that this is in play for anything but passive use green space. So those easements can bring us revenue, and we can try to use that, you know, mitigation credits from companies that need places to do waterway improvements. That could be some of these green space areas with water. I also liked the detail of the signage, getting that up as soon as possible. I know that in order to put a sign up, we have to name it, and I think that's coming up in our next council meeting, maybe. So when folks get their tax bill and they see what they're paying for with their bond money, they can know, hey, that's a green space park. And as soon as we put a sign up, they're gonna want to park there and go check it out. So I appreciate the, the funding of something practical, just to get a trail cut and, you know, a couple parking spaces. The safety concerns, and my final comments on that are, with regard to the speed limits on gravel roads, I know that that wasn't a big part of this plan, but I think that our gravel roads are such a draw that, for trails, and we decided, no, we don't want side paths there, but they're always going to be utilized, and I think dropping the speed limit so that we can try to deter, cut through traffic, and utilize it more as a trail. Also, the citywide speed limit was briefly mentioned in here, and walkability throughout the city is going to do nothing but increase if people feel safe, you know, getting out of, onto some of these side paths and sidewalks. So I would, and I know that we had just an update last week on our progress on putting forward a citywide speed limit study, so that we can start to address that in all areas of the city. It's, it's a tremendous, of tremendous importance, especially to the equestrian community on open roads. Those are my comments, and I think that as a city, we have three things that will differentiate us forever, and that is our green space, our parks, and our trails. And so as this converge, converges into a tremendous quality of life that we can have, I think that it does warrant, you know, having an active trail committee, so that we can engage them as needed. So thank you so much for your hard work. I know it was a huge stakeholder group, and I appreciate all that they did as well.
Anybody else? Questions, comments? Paul?
Just echo a couple of comments that Councilmember Bentley has said. I agree also that the idea of an ongoing Trails Committee is an important one, to ensure that the, the vision and continuity of this has carryover, and we continue to engage the community on those things as we execute them, but also what the next evolution will bring. I've had a chance, through the nudging of Councilmember Bentley as well, to do a little bit of homework on the funding, part of it, private, public-private funding. I happen to have a family member who is involved in street mitigation funding, and they're always looking, this is out of state, not here, but at least give me quick education on some of the value of that and some of the roles that they can play. There, there seems to be a constant source of funding and very few places to spend it. So I would encourage us to take a hard look at that as a resource for us in, in Georgia as well. And just, and last, to applaud the, the work of our very capable consultants, who finally listened at the, to some of the key messages, not, I shouldn't say finally, because we, you know, we did have some excellent exchange throughout. The end product is a very good product. Thank you.
And I will say on the public-private partnerships, we, we took a more conservative approach on funding. So if the city can find other avenues to increase the resources, I think that's fabulous, and what it means is that you can implement things faster. So I would definitely encourage you to, to explore some of those unique funding strategies.
Okay. All right. If there's no other questions, thank you very much. And again, everybody else that's involved and, and also presented tonight, thank you.
And thank you to the, the committee and the staff. It's, we, I really am excited about where we have, have come to, so thank you all.
Steve, do we, do we need any more, you know, do we need to take some direction? Does staff need any direction, or?
I love what I'm hearing, which means we only have to do some basic edits and then get it back before you for a vote. I just want to make sure you're all aware of that. You will not see this again now, correct, until this comes back for a vote, which is going to be in short order.
So again, thank you for all the great feedback. So the next steps are, we will make some of the changes which the city council members have told us to make, and we plan to bring this back in front of the city council on July 20th for the final vote.
And I just, one last, I wasn't able to hear the, the detail of the public comment about the Cogburn Road, so I just would ask that maybe if you could look at that, and, because I, I didn't turn to the page on time to see, sorry, it was Hopewell Road, that the, that was the pointed out concern.
Let me suggest this, city, if you wouldn't mind, could you, and Steve, if it's okay with you, have that public comment emailed to the council? And then, again, in the next short future, if council has any more comments or, or whatever on this, certainly feel free to, to share.
Yes, definitely, as the mayor said, we still have 14, 15 more days to go. If you hear from any other Milton residents, if you want to give some more feedback, more than happy to make those edits, and again, want to bring this back in front of the city council.
And we'd still discuss that at the actual meeting, too, but if, Sudi, if you don't mind getting that public comment that way, just to be refreshed, per, you know, Laura's comment. All right. Thank you very much. Sudi, if you would please sound the items on the first presentation.
First item is consideration of an ordinance to amend Chapter Four, Section 85, Farm Wineries of the Alcoholic Beverages of the Code of the City of Milton, Georgia. This is Agenda Item Number 20-182. Our second and final first presentation item is consideration of an ordinance to amend the Milton Tree Canopy Conservation Ordinance to provide a time extension on the ability to use the density-based tree conservation ordinance or the canopy-based tree conservation ordinance in the city code. Agenda Item Number 20-183.
Okay, do I have a motion for approval of the first presentation reading?
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve the first presentation reading as read by the city clerk.
Okay, I have a motion for approval of the first presentation items from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Longoria. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. We have no items under a public hearing, zoning agenda, or unfinished business, so we'll move on to our new business. Sudi, if you'd please sound that item.
This is consideration of an agreement and certification statement with Fulton County for Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act funding. Agenda Item Number 20-184, Mr. Matt Mariata.
I don't see.
Matt is attending via Zoom?
Oh. Didn't recognize him, sorry.
Hold on just a moment. Hold on just a moment, Matt. We are able to hear him.
So will Matt be on our screen?
He's just gonna be on the, he doesn't have a presentation, he's just speaking.
Right.
If we can get it to work. Hold on just a moment. Hold on one moment, Matt. We're trying to see if we can get the video or the audio working in the, in the council chambers.
There he is.
You're working, Matt?
Okay. I'm sorry, I'm trying to turn down my audio on my meeting, so we don't have feedback. The Coronavirus Aid, Relief, and Economic Security Act, or the CARES Act, was passed by Congress and signed into law on March 27, 2020. Among other things, it provided funds for local governments to support their responses and, and to recover from the COVID-19 disaster. The initial funds were distributed based on population of the, the government, that the government was serving. So several of the metro counties, the City of Atlanta and Fulton County received funds, but the smaller municipalities in Fulton County did not. The county itself received, I believe, $104 million for relief out of this initial grant package from the feds. And they voted on June 3 to allocate 2.5 million to support the other cities in Fulton County, not the City of Atlanta, but the other municipalities in Fulton County, to help them cover COVID-19-related expenses. This, this grant will only cover things that were not budgeted, items that were specifically COVID-19-related. And so we, we have pursued this possibility, along with several other grant opportunities, but given the, the ongoing impact of this, we thought it would be worthwhile to bring this before you to see if we can get some reimbursement for expenses specifically between March 1 and May 15. So it doesn't cover the entirety of, of the disaster, it only covers a discreet period in that disaster. And the two documents that would need to be agreed to tonight is, is the contract for the CARES Act funding, and also a certification on the part of the city that stipulates that, that we're not offsetting planned expenses, that we're not asking for the same funds from multiple different sources, and other, other things to make sure that we're, we're following the regulations of the CARES Act, and also being financially clear in, in the funding and how we're using it. And I would be happy to, oh, the total amount that the city would be asking for in this is approximately $23,000 in relief aid with no match. And that represents real expenses of the city between March 1 and May 15 for the COVID response. And I would be happy to answer any questions that y'all have.
Are there any questions for Matt on that? Okay. No questions, Matt. Thank you for that.
Definitely.
All right, anything else on that? Staff, Stephen?
The only thing we'll need is the, the approval of this to get, and I'm gonna need to get this electronically down to the county first thing in the morning.
Okay. All right. I think I have the documents. So I'll open up for a motion if there's no comments.
Mayor, I approve Agenda Item Number 20-24.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Longoria, with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Sudi, will you please sound the second new business item?
Our final item this evening is council consideration of proposed consent order in connection with quiet title action filed by NRD LLC, Civil Action File Number 2019 CV 323925, Agenda Item Number 20185. Mr. Chris Hamilton.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Mayor and council. And my name's Chris Hamilton. I'm here on behalf of Ken Gerard, I'm his law partner. And I wanted to, I know that you had had a discussion with Sarah Van Volkenberg from my office concerning this tax matter. This consent order provides us with the best ability to get ourselves out of litigation and get the two years of taxes that, that we're entitled to get under the law. I'm happy to, I know that you had a discussion with Sarah. I'm happy to answer any questions concerning the consent order or concerning tax executions in general, but I, I don't want to plow new ground if, if, if this is something that you've already covered in executive session.
Yeah, I'll open up, does anybody have any questions for Chris on that? So we're probably good. I did want to say, you know, we had Ken on our agenda, and I was thinking, wow, Ken sure is looking a whole lot better and, and all that, and not, not wearing those silly little ties anymore, so I was really excited. No, but thank you, Chris.
May I have permission to pass that along to him?
Sure. So obviously, from a legal standpoint, this is your, you guys' recommendation.
This is the recommendation. We're, we're in litigation that we have no, we can't advance a better claim than, than the two years of taxes that we're talking about here. And I have some ideas that I would like to talk with Stacy about going forward that, that might be helpful to prevent the situation in the future, but I think I probably should have that conversation with her before bringing it to the full council.
Okay. All right. So if there's no questions, I'll open up for a motion.
Mayor, I'd like to make a motion to approve Agenda Item Number 20-185.
Second. Okay, I have a motion for approval from Councilmember Bentley, with a second from Councilmember Moore. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous. All right, we'll move on to reports. Is anything that council wants to report on? Okay, I just, you know, comment, I hope everybody had a good Fourth of July. I think I've talked to a few of you, it seems like, and I know we're ongoing discussion on fireworks, and we'll be looking at it again, but unfortunately, it's, it's above our heads. But it seemed like it was more this year, even though we publicized more, you know, about the concerns and whatnot, which I want to thank the city and Greg for doing that, that we did a great job at that, but I think we all noticed, it seemed like, because there was no public fireworks, it looks like a lot of individuals must have done, done fireworks. But is there anything council wants to report on?
No, I just wanted to also thank the, the efforts of communications team on the fireworks and the video that the Milton Equestrian Committee put out. I think that that goes a long way, the education and, and the engagement of the city. I didn't get any emails this year. I think people clearly understood that the city is trying their best to make people aware of, you know, converging uses. So it was, it was intense, but it was also pretty concentrated.
Okay. All right, well then, we'll move on to staff and fire. And the chief's looking a whole lot better, too, isn't he? How does Mark?
Good evening, Mayor and council. Mark Stevens, Deputy Fire Chief, standing in for Robert Agar, who's enjoying some vacation right now. Just a quick update from the Fire Department, starting with COVID-19, our fire stations still remain close to the public. We are doing community outreach remotely and safely, following all the social distance guidelines, et cetera. We were able to participate in two longstanding traditions this Fourth of July with two subdivisions. We lead a, a walking bicycle parade, the kids decorate bicycles, and the fire truck comes and leads them out. We just weren't able to do the touch truck and the things we do normally at the end of those parades, but we're still trying to get out there when we can and be seen and support the community. The COVID-19 call volume, there's been the recent uptick we all know about with cases in, in the state and in the community, but our call volume is really not representative of that. We're, we're still basically where we've been since this started, as far as our responses to COVID-related calls. COVID-related calls, and our PPE burn rate is still very minimal, so we feel very secure with our cache of equipment and PPE supplies. So everything is fine as far as that goes. Staffing is presenting a few challenges. I don't know if you know, but we had three recent resignations. Couple of folks moved out of state and one decided to change departments. We have made two job offers. One gentleman joining us from Florida starts next Monday, and we have a candidate who is not certified, and they will start training at the Georgia Public Safety Training Center at the end of the month. So we've got those two job offers already signed, and we have five other candidates that we are interviewing right now. So we expect to be back to full staffing here within the next month or so. Most of you know, but Fulton County Government, to promote the 2020 census, put out a fire station challenge to submit a video with some parameters, couldn't be more than a minute long, had to explain how the census helps public safety. And I'm proud to say that our department, the creative minds pulled together, and we submitted a video and we got first place in the county. But first place does not mean we won, because Roswell got the champion prize, so it was creative how they worded it, but first place is actually second place, so. But I'm still, we're still proud of that, and we had a lot of fun doing that. And then lastly, we did not have any major incidents with fireworks in the city of Milton over the Fourth of July holiday. However, we did assist our partners in Alpharetta with two house fires late Saturday night that were tied to fireworks. One was very minor, started in the bushes and worked up the siding of the house, and unfortunately, the other one that got on the roof got in the attic and ran the attic. So we did have a little trouble with that. But any questions for the Fire Department?
Any questions? Mark? As always, thank you for everything that you and all your guys do for us.
Glad to do it. Thank you. I clean my own mess.
Okay, Greg?
Hi, all. So I guess this is my first time doing this in person, even though I've been here plenty. I've been here for seven months, seems about seven years or so, but it's been all good. And I really enjoyed every moment, so thanks again for having me. I also noticed speaking in the mic, I should know that. So a lot of things we've done before, we are continuing to do, like social media updates, hopefully seeing things from, you know, community scenes, the council recaps, to a lot more, we're trying to keep that up. It's a little challenging when we don't have city events in the same way, and we, but we try, we try to be creative as much as we can. There's a lot of answering questions, we're getting more via social media than before and email. And also priorities, communication to our citizens. So things like our outdoor, I don't know if you saw that, but our outdoor facility rental policy has changed, things like that. Council previews is a priority for us, continues. And communications with specific stakeholders. Later this week, you'll see something to former Milton country called neighbors, whether they're pool pass holders, that sort of thing, to target people as much as we can. Another one of our focuses is informing you all, elected officials, because I think that's important, that you know as much as you can what's happening. And also, in tandem with that, we want to keep city staff informed, and that's a priority for us, that communications is not just outreach, it's also, you know, within. And I think you guys are part of the team, and it's important that you know as ambassadors what's going on, it's also important that all our city staff know what's going on, as much as we can, because it's a lot of evolving, we don't want silos, we want people to be engaged and part of this team effort. So that being said, there's been, since I think I talked to you last, with my partner in crime, Courtney, except not the crime part, who is with communications engagement. So we, you know, as you know, special events and things like that are not happening the same way we, but we're trying to be creative about things, and we're trying to do different things. So we, for example, are creating project webpages, like the trails fund you just heard about. We completed the citywide 2019 annual report, working on the police department annual report. We did things like the pool permit workshop with our community development department. So there's different ways we can outreach, and that's combination of in-person and Zoom and electronically, all that thing. So we mentioned a little bit about the fireworks thing, that was kind of a big effort with the, from, we had four different videos, I want to thank Police and Fire in addition to Susan Kimball for being such a gracious host. And we're able to spin that to not just one video, but four different videos, because frankly, people don't necessarily want to sit through 10 minutes, but they'll sit through 10 one-minute videos. So it's just a way to be creative about it, in addition to different things. One of the best parts about that is that there, this content should be timeless, that we've kind of designed it that way, so that next time Labor Day and Memorial Day and whatever else rolls around, that we still have a good stockpile of information, so you don't have to reinvent the wheel every single time. And that webpage that was also designed for that. And also, just kind of coming soon later this month, we are finally on track to relaunch a redesigned website, hopefully by the end of the month. If all goes well, it'll look different, but it'll have, it'll be more, hopefully more intuitive, more useful. So that is a, and I want to thank Jen Hartwig for that, for really kind of spearheading that, she's part of our team, because she's been, basically, but it's been about 75% of her job lately to do that. One thing I talked about, being creative about events. So Independence Day, there was no walking parade this year, because it's not just the walking parade part, it's really the gathering before and after, and we didn't know we could do that safely. We're kind of in, similar to what our North Fulton communities have done. But we still had, you know, six or seven social media posts, trivia, engaging contact, festive pictures. We had Tricia Wolf from our team went out on July 4 and took some pictures of some things, including our firefighters, and that's, that's something that we really appreciate, and we're, it's part of our efforts to be, you have to work harder to engage, because you can't do it in the traditional ways. You have to be more creative about it and hopefully try to reach people in different ways. One major change since we last spoke is that, in addition to council, the committee and boards are resuming. And one of the things, we also still realize that a lot of people still can't come out or don't come out, so we wanted, we're putting more of those on Zoom and Facebook Live as well, so it's not just council. And also, we are previewing those and recapping those, so it's just kind of, you know, could be a few extra things every week, but that's important. But I think it's really valuable, because it shows not only what the council does, but what the entirety of city government does, and all these volunteers that you have nominated for these committees, what they're doing. We'll have a DRB meeting tomorrow night, and that's something that we'll also, you know, for example, planning commission, other things like that. And people are noticing things that they didn't notice before. So this is part of our commitment to transparency and showing the breadth and the depth of our government action. So, and just kind of in closing, I want, that continues our general mission to engage, inform, and connect with Milton residents. One of the highlight, important things for me is remind them that COVID-19 is with us. I'm not sure if you saw today that the Alpharetta testing site for Fulton County finished, cut off appointments around, I think in the late morning, and that's the earliest they've ever done. So it just kind of a sign that, it's just another indication that this is not going away, needless to say. So we're trying to keep people reminded of that in different things like that. And generally, we want to stress honesty, transparency, humility, I think, is important, and to be service to our citizens, and that's really important for the communications aspect especially. We're not, we're, they're working with our citizens, not, you know, against them. So, so any questions or?
Any questions for Greg? No, but thank you very much.
Sure, thank you.
Appreciate that. Okay, do I have a motion to adjourn into executive, this executive session to discuss personnel?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion from Councilmember Longoria with a second from Councilmember Jameson. All in favor to move into executive session? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
That's unanimous.